Good.
All right, I call this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show it is nine thirty-one AM and all five members of the court are present. We're streaming live on our YouTube channel and if you're watching and you'd like to call in and make a comment, you may call in on nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for implication. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and grant us wisdom. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Young County and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all we accomplished, is for the service of our community. With these things, in your name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the deep Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we'll move to item number three, public comments. I have some public comments. I spoke to Titus last week. Their environmental report is done. They are awaiting confirmation from their legal department that they'll be not be in violation with their engagement with the consultants by releasing the document. They don't think they are going to be. They just want to make sure that they're not going to have any problem with that. But hopefully, we'll have the environmental report soon. Spoke to Plug Power. Their CEO finished meetings with the DOE loan office in the last week. They're hoping to hear from the Secretary of Energy soon, say in the next four to five weeks, on whether or not that loan that they receive will be honored. One of the things which I thought was interesting, Plug told the DOE that they'd be willing to give some of the loan back, in other words, take less money, in exchange for the DOE putting a greater emphasis on their project in Texas. So, and that's us, we are a project in Texas. And they said that they have been in meaningful, had meaningful contact and dialogue with the data center developers about potentially running a pipeline over there to them. So, that's kind of where we are on those projects. Any other public comments?
It refers to the environmental impact study. Was that done in-house by Titus or was that done by an outside agency?
They hired a consultant. They hired an outside consultant to do it. And so they're, with all the, they don't think there's a problem with releasing it. They're just, they want their lawyers to review the engagement letter to make sure they're not going to be in violation with their agreement with the consultant. And my thought is, what's the point of having a report if you can't use it?
Will that be available to?
So, if I get it, it's going to be, apparently it's going to be a gigantic file. So, they can't email it to me. Like, they've already confirmed it's too big to email. So, they'll either give it to me in a Dropbox or mail it to me. And then what I'll do is I will announce that we have it and then I will put it as an exhibit in the Commissioners' Court minutes and pack it and it'll be available at the clerk's office. So, it will be, if they can release it to me and it becomes public, that's what I'm going to do with it and then anybody going there will get it.
Well, y'all as a court can say, hey, we want to see it first. Y'all can demand that they release it, couldn't you?
We have told them we want it and so they're...
Make that a condition?
Yeah, well, we have told them we want it and we're trying to get it. And I know that you'd like to see it, so we're, I'm doing what I can.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comments? Tom?
Just on the county courthouse annex. Have been in conversation about move with the tag office from where it currently is in the building. We're working on that. There's some demolition and we're looking to make a, working with Commissioners, trying to make a safer environment there. Just want to let you know, there shouldn't be any change to the rate of the, of the lease for next year, even though it's additional space for going into what was the old police department. You may want to plan on your budget side for build-out changes. We're talking about doors and windows, which is not in what your normal planning has been in the past. That's the only, that's the only thing that you're going to have to do on your side. We're going to redo exterior walls, windows, carpet and whatnot on the general spaces. We're doing demolition now to be an electrical upgrade and H U E C.
Do you have any idea of what that, what that amount will be?
No, I know Commissioner Wiley was working on some information here, just looking at what you've done historically on the glass pass window and then a hardened door, which is a steel door wall and everything. We're going to take care of that. But those elements really need to fall to you all just because, both from a liability and from a consistency standpoint.
But do you want to just go ahead and get the door and then get us a bill for it?
I can do that. I would really like your input on what they are and what it is you want done. I don't mind, I don't mind working with you at all on getting that coordinated and scalded and done. I know what that kind of headache can be, whether you're sitting here or over there. But that, for budget plan purposes, I just want to come with you on that. And that's also going to make for that safe drop-off. Someone was looking for that.
Yes.
That's going to be in that same spot, the same cameras that'll be used for that because that's typically a Friday through Sunday weekend kind of drop-off thing.
Wednesday and Wednesdays.
Yes, but it's typically after hours. It's after they're there. But that's going to be that same spot. We're going to repave that whole side and that's going to give for some additional parking and additional spots there that are not readily apparent right now. It's going to be, it's going to be much better than what it has been and we'll give a very good spot for that and we'll make for a much safer tag office arrangement. It's a one-story. We could, there's a lot of different things that are going to make that just a better all-around experience for anybody going there. And I've been out of town for two weeks, but I just want to let you know everyone that I've talked to, we're back to eight hours a day, five days a week and everybody is very, very happy. That's all going in good stead. I have a few headbands thing doing the contract.
She's very good.
Yeah, you have new employees, she's excellent. Any questions for me?
No, thank you. So, everyone's really excited about it.
It's going well.
Eric?
Thanks, Judge. I just had a couple of things really quick on the courthouse on logistics side. A reminder, the Hudson Westbrook concert is coming up this weekend. We're trying to get all the interior parking lots cleared out by six on Friday. Solid waste transition, the garbage transition is coming at the end of the month. I did want to mention, for a short period, you're going to have two sets of dumpsters out there, the old one and the new one to ensure continuity, right? But the new ones are great, so September first, start putting it in the gray ones, right? And then the blue ones will...
We don't fill both of them up?
Please don't.
I want to take a good, try to get all the shit out of them.
Get all you can get out of them.
I'll bring my stuff in from my house.
The last time I was here, and I know I keep coming back like a bad penny, but I mentioned the gas rates going up, Texas gas. Just wanted to inform the court, the city did file, did file a resolution and intend to file a rate case on the Texas gas stuff. It's twelve percent on residential, we're talking about going up, and about ten to fifteen percent on all the commercial side. We have retained an attorney to file a rate case and challenge those rate increases. Judge mentioned the hydrogen plant. I've got a couple of questions, just want to mention what we're doing out there. We're currently in the final stages of trying to make that water line that goes up 209 and from the sewer plant operational. We've granted some problems, but you'll see our folks out there. We have run water a couple of times and we're doing some more tests to get it all there. The idea is, if indeed, as the judge briefed, everything kind of goes through, they're talking about construction in the late spring. We want to make sure we can provide them with construction water up there. And so, we're making sure that that line will be ready to run when that kicks off. And then one other thing you may hear about, with the council meeting on Thursday, we are trying to award a contract for finally for the construction of the walking trails in Byram's Park. That's been ten years we've been working on that, right? But that looks like it's finally going to move forward and, you know, the park serves everybody in the county and we hope it'll be a great addition.
That will be a wonderful addition.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Let's move to item number four, consider the county clerk minutes from the previous meeting. One comment was, I didn't have any issue with what was in the packet, but we still had the little red, the red line marks on there. So, if we approve the minutes as is, team is going to go print us a new copy of the sign. But do you want to have any comments to the minutes?
Absolutely.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, a second for Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item number five, consider the treasurer's financial report, updates on securities pledge. Item number six, consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable. All ready with being back for, didn't you pull it at twelve fifteen last night? Look at you.
I haven't drank since you got here.
Did I drink a water? Oh, okay, today's run, Sherry just did a small run this week. Since it was the first of the month, you had to do it, so. Total is twenty-five thousand, seven twenty-three, twenty-one, and out of the general fund is nineteen thousand, two hundred, twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents. And I kind of looked through here, I noticed that there's, we paid for eight computers, so that's ninety-five hundred dollars of it. And there is Shook's included in this.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
To approve.
Motion from Commissioner Cresswell, we'll do a second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes four zero with Commissioner Shook abstaining. Four zero one. Sorry, I said that wrong. I got it almost right, almost right. It's Monday. Item number seven, discuss and consider the third quarter fiscal year 2025 Young County Arena financial report and further authorize the distribution of eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-nine cents in support of the arena's operating deficit per the current lease agreement between the Young County Commissioners Court and the City of Reno. Eric?
Thank you very much, Judge. Pleasure to be back with you this quarter, giving you your update on arena operations. As you can see, everybody should have a packet, I think. On the top is the invoice that lists the overall numbers, the total operating deficit through the third quarter of fiscal year 26 with fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-eight cents. That's split evenly between the GEIC, which is the economic development arm of the city, and the county, so the county share totaling up to fifteen is in the item to eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. I also wanted to give you on the second page, kind of where we sit on contributions to the arena. With this contribution, assuming that the Commissioners' Court approves it, total contributions for this fiscal year will be fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. We originally budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so we're still below that. We're actually anticipating, if we don't get anything else to go wrong, that we won't have to draw down the full hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year. We should be about thirty thousand dollars short of that, but you never can tell what's around the corner, but we're hoping, we're certainly trying to spend as little as we can and make as much money at the arena as we can. Looking over on the next page, the top chart there between the two black lines, that's your total revenues this fiscal year to date. Total revenues, including all monies from the county and the GEIC this fiscal year, is four hundred and eighty-one thousand, sixteen dollars. You'll notice there, I highlighted that number there that you see for the county's, Young County Arena support and GEIC support. That's higher than what I listed on the previous sheet. That's because of the fiscal year timing, right? We get the last quarter of the fiscal year payment in October, so that includes, that includes that number. Looking down at expenses, looking down at expenses, we are running a little high on janitorial supplies. We've had to buy a bunch of cleaning materials for some stuff that happened out there and the fuel costs, you know, the fuel spiked up there for a little bit. But looking at some of the other line items, we don't anticipate going over, but we'll just do like we've done before, stay within our budget, move some money around for the additional line items. We do have some savings in the other line items. Looking over expenses on the next page, we have had to rent a lift a couple of times on those leases and rentals and that's kind of putting us at almost our max on that. But once again, we can move a little money around there and we got hit with a pretty big skid steer maintenance bill and that's what's driving the equipment repairs up. But once again, looking at some of the other lower line items, we think we'll be able to move the money around. So, we said our total revenues were four eighty-one, four ninety-one thousand, sixteen dollars, looking at total expenses of just short of five hundred thousand dollars so far this fiscal year at four hundred and ninety-seven, three sixty-seven. That's just showing that we do the math and come up with that operating deficit of sixteen thousand, three fifty-one, split evenly between the two. I do want to mention that thanks to the great partnership, we do have fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars in cash on hand. As a reminder, what that does is, that gives us the working capital necessarily, just like any business, to pay bills. If you remember, it was down kind of low, but we're kind of catching back up and we're looking in good shape so that when we head into that first quarter of the new fiscal year, right, we'll have enough cash and we don't go into a negative position with our cash. We have enough cash to go. I do want to mention the sponsorship for the arena has been great. Just in this calendar year alone, we've had Campbell Farm and Ranch that had a five thousand dollar sponsorship, Texan Metals, a three thousand dollar sponsorship, Salt Creek and Salt Creek's High Countryside Bed Planting, seven fifty, Equacam, seven fifty, the Cowboy Church in Young County, seven fifty. So, I just want to take a minute. There's been so many other sponsors and if I leave any off, I apologize, but I want to mention some of the great businesses here in town that have donated of their, of their money and their time to help out the arena. Those include Cow Kids Club, Ken's Equipment, Brazos Communications, Legacy Horse Sales, Zach Burkett Company, Graham Savings, Capital Farm Credit, Brazos Title, Don's Butane, who's also a board member, Cattlemen's Derby, who's also a board member, Credo Construction, donated labor and materials, they're also a board member, and Faith Community Rural Health Clinic. This support of the arena and keeping this agricultural tradition alive in Young County is just fantastic. And I just want to say on behalf of the board how much we appreciate this support of all these sponsors. Ending, any questions, Judge Commissioners? That concludes my report for this court.
How's the new manager doing?
The new manager is doing great and we had some personnel churned and one of our folks resigned to resign, but we're going to promote somebody internally, it looks like, from within and then advertise to that position, so we should be able to keep going without being... Julie Elrod is doing a fantastic job.
Julie?
Elrod.
Elrod.
It's different.
No, there's two Julie Elrods?
There's two, yes.
Because the Julie Elrod I know doesn't seem like an arena person.
Julie's doing a fantastic job.
Okay, wonderful. She's been there for a little while now.
She's been here this fall, yes, sir.
Is it been that long?
Time flies, it's sort of...
Really? It's just not that long ago, Tony was in here.
She's already been here by the morning, three or four tonight.
Yeah. Okay. All right, do we, do we have a motion to authorize the dispersment of eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-nine cents? Motion from Commissioner Wiley, a second from Commissioner Craig, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jimmy, and thank you, Alan. Y'all are doing a wonderful job taking care of that, so.
If we get a, at the end of the year, we don't spend all of this, we're going to put that money right back into, instead of pulling it forward, right?
Well, we've already budgeted next year for an amount that we need to do. So, that money, if we don't spend it all, it'll go into our front balance that we can then, you know...
We can disperse it back.
We can, we can put it in our budget.
Actually, he's going to do such a good job in that board we got. It's going to get to where it starts paying next year.
You know, the two big items in the rough terrain, gas lines, which the gas line has already made what is saving us on gas. That's made a big difference in the time that the gas rates go up, which has a plus. The other thing is, is we had the motor go out on our rack truck, which our rack truck is very important when we have our course of being set. That costs us some money. And then the skid steer. And you say, well, only because of the skid steer. Well, ninety-nine point nine percent of this life is running insane. Insane is bracing. So, those undercarried parts are going to wear out. So, it's just normal wear and tear is what causes a lot of that. But all in all, if we can, we're looking at this next year, if we don't have a big blow up, we're going to be set pretty good for a good year.
Let's move to item number eight, ratified contract between Young County and Ann Daly, Ann Daly regarding the training and duty, training on duties, responsibility and bank work facilitiations for Young County. This is an item that we discussed at a previous meeting. Ann has agreed to the terms and she has already started. And how's that going?
It's feeling good. We're making a lot of progress.
Awesome.
Got some general entries to do.
I did those this morning.
Okay. Ready to move forward.
Great.
Well, I can move. All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Cresswell. We have a second, second from Commissioner Craig. Is there any discussion on the matter? All in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item number nine, discuss and consider the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles annual county fee changes for 2026. So, if I could ask you guys, go look into the packet. We do this every year. And so, we have an option, you know, on fees that we can charge and the, the fees that you can do are, you can have a county road and bridge fee that may not exceed ten dollars. You can have a child safety fee that may not exceed a dollar fifty. And then there's another ten-dollar charge that's only available for Dexter, Brazos, Cameron, El Paso, Hidalgo, Webb County. So, we have historically charged the ten-dollar fee as does, I would say, the majority of the counties in Texas. I didn't count them, but it honestly looks like almost every county does the ten-dollar fee. The dollar fifty fee, there are some counties that do that, but looking at our neck of the woods, Archer, Jack, Stevens, kind of our, our size counties, none of them are charging that dollar fifty fee. So, we're basically doing what everyone else does. Does anyone see a need to add the child safety fee onto the registration? Do we all, does anyone not want to continue doing the ten-dollar road and bridge fee?
I say we continue the ten-dollar road and bridge fee like it has in the past. I don't do that anymore.
Okay. So, Commissioner Wiley is making a motion?
Have we collected in the last year on that, do we know?
I don't know. Do you know?
I can figure it out.
Fortunately, we don't have Krista's report this time. We have it on there.
Could be next week.
Is it next week?
So, when I pulled this on the twenty-eighth of July, we had collected a hundred and, nearly a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
All right, Commissioner Wiley made a, made a motion for us to have no change in our policy and to continue the same charges from last year. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Shook. Any discussion? You're looking at me like you got a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. You have very concerning eyes.
Smoke coming out of you.
All right, is it ten AM yet? It is not ten AM yet, so let's wait a few minutes. Let's move to item number eleven, discuss and consider the application permit to install an entry culvert in the county road right-of-way ditch line for Wassa Road. This is presented by Commissioner Cresswell.
Yes, we have a young lady, she's building a house in behind her parents. So, she was making a new entrance way going into the property. When we got, we went in, we looked at it, we got the culvert length that she needed, she like bought it, we're ready to put it in, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion and we accept this permit.
All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a second for Commissioner Wiley. Is there any discussion on the matter? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number twelve, discuss and consider permission for Bruce Stevens given to season four to enter his property on Oliver Lane for the purpose of cleaning the creek out to aid the water flow for public safety. Commissioner Wiley?
We, the past years, we had lots of flooding through there. The rocks from the road itself, the road flushed down through the creek there, so we just recovered that rock and also fixed it to where the water flowed back. So, it's a win-win in both directions.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Wiley has made this motion. Is there a second?
Second, ready.
Second from Commissioner Craig. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider the burn restrictions. Anyone, I mean, we didn't get enough rain. I don't have rain.
I loved it back this weekend, but it wasn't enough. Not helped, but it didn't lie, it won't last.
I was sharing with y'all, I didn't, you know, a lot of rain this, this weekend. Was it Thursday last week? I got a part of me in my house.
It's so fatty that you couldn't...
Yeah, got a little bit of rain yesterday, but, I mean, I was just sprinkled. All right, another comment I'll make is that I know that probably was time for a burn being because I didn't get one single negative comment and I normally get a lot of them when we do it. So, I was, thought we did a good job. So, we'll go with no action there. All right, I'm going to, looks like it's ten o'clock, so let's open some sealed bids.
I received one bid. It's from Blake Fulon, what, or Fulon, what, oh, Jolly Eastland, Texas. And the print's real small.
Maybe we've got small print, but a big bid.
Yeah, so it looks to me, let me watch you think. He said that, but then this is the sheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, I see, he has a discount.
A discount, yeah.
Okay. So, total is eighty-four thousand, one twenty-nine, twenty-five.
Cheap enough, very good. Is that with or without the bed?
Without the bed.
They gave a fifty-three hundred dollar discount, too.
Pretty good discount. I'll accept this, it's just all the one.
You said you're trading it forward then?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Wiley to accept this sealed bid. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, sir.
Second from Commissioner Cresswell. Is there any discussion on the matter? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Shall we take a five-minute recess before we start, or a ten-minute recess before we start the budget workshop?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And it just, since we have this on the agenda about the vehicle tax, a lot of counties are doing a fifth precinct.
I haven't heard of that.
Jack County does.
Yeah, and what they do is they go in each year and they put funds in that to buy extra, like, say Jimmy needed a truck every...
Well, it's just a budgeting exercise. It's not really a fifth-nothing.
No, it's a budgeting exercise, but like you would put, take that money and instead of putting it in the general fund, it would go into what you call a fifth precinct. That would make it eligible, it's just road and bridge, to go into a piece of equipment that the county needs or something of that nature.
So, I'm just, just a question, how is that any different from us putting it in the general fund? Because every year...
Because nobody's going to ask to pull it out and put, buy a piece of equipment just to, hopefully, if you have it in that fifth precinct, it can be shared equipment in that process is what they do.
So, does that, does that fifth precinct, does that, does that equipment belong to all four precincts?
What they do is they go yearly, every four years, they can hit the, whoever's year it is, they can get to choose if they're going to buy certain piece of equipment. And it'll wind up being that precinct's loaded.
So, why wouldn't you just put it in the regular budget?
How does that work?
It'd be different.
I don't know, but that's what I was asking. Jimmy's saying it does. And I was just bringing up on it the other day.
Because all of its general fund, they don't have a rubbery tag on it. I don't see a thing. I don't see a benefit to that.
I don't know.
That's just what they do with their gang.
That's interesting. I, uh...
But I don't know why they would want to do that. And I'm pretty sure they're putting that into it the way I read on it.
Well, I'll, I'll ask all the, I'll ask all the judges when I go to more checks, you know, who's doing it.
And why they would be doing it.
Yeah, why they're doing it.
While they're going to that effort.
Yeah.
It sounds like extra effort.
Well, if they had a road and bridge tax, because we don't, everything, I could see that maybe if you did, if you had a road and bridge tax and say it was collected in the N and O and with...
To me, all it seems like you do is if you put that money there, then you end up taking less money annually out of the general fund. I mean, it ends up being a wash.
When I first seen it, I thought it was going to be like, uh, non-precinct counties doing it. You know, the ones that are doing, where they have their engineer running all of it and then they just have a commissioner separate. But we got to reading up on it. And it's a lot of smaller counties doing it that are, have that fifth precinct added. And I don't know why exactly that it would make a difference. But that's what the, some of that money goes to it. And then they budget into it too, also for annual amount for a piece of equipment.
It almost sounds like something's happened in these, in those counties. Like, like, for example, we have it with the sheriff's office. Like, they're always saying, where is this money from? The out-of-town prisoners going? They would like to see it go directly into their budget item, budget line, which is fine. We can do it that way. You just end up moving less general fund money over. It's just kind of things, I could see where somebody, you know, got on a soapbox and said, let's do it. And that was the kind of way, way to...
I'm not saying let's make no moves. I'm just bringing that up to...
Well, I'll, I'll keep my ears open and kind of, kind of hear what other counties are doing with that.
I have a body break.
All right. All right, we'll take a 10-minute recess and we'll come back for a budget workshop.